I'm going to call the meeting to order. Thank you for being here tonight. Are there any special intentions? Okay, I'd like to request prayer for a good friend of mine, Reagan. She is currently in the hospital. I just want to pray for her that, for her to get better and for strength for her and her family. Okay, council, if we can all stand, Councilmember Dunn, would you please lead us in the pledge? Prayer, sorry, prayer.
Let us bow over heads. Father, in the name of Jesus, dear master, as we come together once again this hour in the evening, we just want to give you some humble thanks for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. But dear God, as we come, we pray today for the mayor, the police chief, the fire chief, the administration, this council, and all that make up the city of Kenner. Let us not forget about the residents, dear God. Father, you've been good to us. You have allowed the storms to pass over, and we weren't in, we weren't inundated by storms so far this year. We can't pay you, but we can tell you thank you. And dear master, we ask tonight and every night, every day, for wisdom, knowledge, and understanding that we will be able to carry out the business that is needful for the people of Kenner, and we won't be so forgetful to give you all the praise, the glory, and the honor. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Counselwoman Branigan, please lead us in the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, you have a quorum. Councilmember Wilmot is the acting mayor. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Next, we have correspondence, reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads. Does the administration have anything that they would like to present? Yes, acting mayor?
First off, I want to make sure that Dr. Tassin, are you in the audience?
Yes.
Thank you, good, okay. Just wanted to make sure you were here. I'd like to do an intro for Dr. Ron Tassin. He is the king-elect of Zulu Social Aid and Pleasure Club. His reign commences on King's Day, January 6, 2026. Dr. Tassin owns businesses in the city of Kenner, and he is a lifelong resident of Jefferson Parish. Dr. Tassin earned his Bachelor's of Science and Master's of Arts in Criminal Justice from Southern University at New Orleans. He then earned his Doctorate of Management in Criminal Justice from Colorado Technical University. Dr. Tassin works in areas of education and mental health. Dr. Tassin founded Assurance Care Provider LLC, which is a behavioral health agency providing vital mental health and substance abuse services to individuals and families. He has spent many years monitoring young, mentoring young persons with juvenile, the juvenile justice system. He also worked with young athletes and students at Jesse Owens Playground and JPRD Sports. He also serves as a manager of student partnerships and programs at Inspired NOLA Schools. Dr. Tassin has been a proud member of the Zulu Social Aid and Pleasure Club since 2006, wherein he has served in numerous capacities and is currently the treasurer. Lundigrau is set for Monday, February 16, 2026, at 11:00 a.m. in Rivertown, the 400 block of Williams Boulevard. At this wonderful event, city proclamations are to be read and provided to the king and queen of Zulu and to the king and queen of August, followed by a toast with their royal courts. Then followed by live music with food vendors in the area. It's truly a wonderful event. Please consider joining us. With that, I kindly ask that Dr. Tassin, king-elect of Zulu, if he would be so kind to address and greet the members of the Kenner City Government and its citizens. Hail King Zulu. Dr. Tassin, if you will, come up to the podium over here to my right and address us. Thank you, Dr. Tassin.
Thank you. Good evening to everyone. Yes, I am the elect king of Zulu 2026. I reign 2026 as well. I am a longtime member of the city of Kenner, raised, born, schooling as well. My office for behavioral health is only like 500 feet away from here. But it, yes, it is an honor, right? But I am here just to, to make sure that a citizen from the city of Kenner give more rise, give more push, and go, and give more of an honor. It is, it is being an honor. I am the hundred and actually tenth king of Zulu, and that's what's said. What I'm going to read is that it's going to be to the council board as actually saying thank you for allowing me to actually speak tonight. Good afternoon, good evening, parish president, council members, guests, and members of our Kenner Parish community. As, as King Zulu-elect 2026, it is truly an honor to stand before you and express my heartfelt thanks to the Kenner City Council for your continued support. As a longtime Jefferson Parish resident and business owner, I appreciate support of my mission and goals, and now it will continue to throughout my reign for the carnival season. Zulu has always stood as a symbol of unity, culture, and celebration. I am proud to represent this, this city of Kenner through Zulu, every act of service we perform. I say thank you again for your support, encouragement, and your commitment to keeping our tradition alive. Together, we make this carnival one of to remember. Hail Zulu. Then on my last note, I just wanted to pay tribute to all my charge affairs. You could please stand, please. And we did bring gifts at Zulu, as we do. We brought gifts for all of the board members and, where is it, the chief right here of the fire department, thank you again, we really appreciate it. And tonight, let tonight be something of a glory. I think that we have collected Zulu posters to actually hand out, and we also have the hats as well. Thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Tassin. We look forward to your service. Thank you.
Could we get a picture as well?
Yeah.
Yes. Natalie, could you take a picture of us?
Dr. Tassin, if we could, could by the podium, I'll come front, in front of the council members, and we're going to go ahead and take a group picture. If everybody will bear with me, I have to continue with the mayor's comments. Be a few minutes, so. Kenner recreation programs. Recreation is now open for several programs. Youth basketball, ages five through 12. Coach Micah Hakens and the Bonable Basketball Team will kick off the season with a free clinic on November 29th. Registration is required. Teen soccer, four V four, ages 13 through 18, in partnership with NOLA Sports Center. Inclusive tennis and wheelchair basketball, ages five plus. Senior Shenanigans, our newest inclusive program for ages 50 and above, featuring bocce, chair volleyball, and kickball. Participation is free. Holiday activity registration will also open soon. Contact Recreation Department for details on these programs. Upcoming events. Sunday, November 16th, Kenner Food Truck Festival, Lake Town, by the Kenner Boat Launch, from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Free admission, live music from Amber Drive, The Wise Guys, rock show, NOLA, and Timothy Wayne, enjoy arts and craft vendors, kids' activity zone, and over 30 food trucks. Note, all Lake Town parking lots north of the levee will be closed Saturday, November 15th at 7:00 p.m., 7:00 a.m., I'm sorry. And the boat launch closes at 4:00 p.m. Both will reopen Sunday, November 16th at 11:00 p.m. Visit the city's website for parking, shuttle, vendor, and event information. Tuesday, November 18th, Kenner Business Association State-of-the-City Luncheon at Chateau Country Club, presented by Mayor Glazier, highlighting city accomplishments and upcoming incentives, initiatives, I'm sorry. Sunday, November 30th, Kenner Magical Christmas Village Opening Night, Historic Rivertown. Tuesday, December 2nd, Sippin' with Santa, Chateau Country Club, a festival and our largest fundraiser event for the Kenner Food Truck sponsorships, and donations are welcome. Saturday, December 6th, Santa in the Sand, Coconut Beach Volleyball Tournament fundraiser supporting Kenner families in need of this holiday season. Includes a volleyball clinic hosted by Olympians Taran Kloth and Kristen Nuss. No volleyball experience necessary to participate in this good time and great cause. Saturday, December 13th, Kenner's Old Man River Half Marathon, 10K and 5K in Historic Rivertown. All event details can be found on the city of Kenner's website by contacting City Hall. We also have seven, several opening positions posted on our website. Please join City of Kenner team and make a difference in your community. And that's it, that wraps it up. That's the mayor's comments. Thank you.
Thank you, acting mayor Wilmot.
Do we have any resolutions, motions, or other items from the floor? Seeing none, under the consent agenda, we have item one, approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of October 17, 2025. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. We have none. Item three is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item three A is application number 25-025, City of Kenner District One, to hold a public gathering on January 19, 2026, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for the purpose of a 42nd Annual Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration and March on various streets and ending at AP Clay Center Parking Lot. Item three B is application number 25-026, Pilgrim Baptist Church, to hold a public gathering on November 1, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for the purpose of a third annual car show at Pilgrim Baptist Church in Kenner, Louisiana. Item three C is application number 25-022, First Baptist Church of Kenner, to hold a public gathering on October 31, 2025, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the purpose of a trunk or treat at First Baptist Church. Item three D is application number 25-023, Optimum Holistic and Alternative Care, to hold a public gathering on October 3, 2026, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. for the purpose of a Bonable Alumni Picnic at Veterans Park. Item three E is application number 25-013, Discovery Health Sciences School, to hold a public gathering on November 8, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And November 9, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for the purpose of school and community engagement at 3837 Loyola Drive. That will conclude the consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember LaHatt, seconded by Councilmember Branigan, to approve consent agenda. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 7-0.
6-0.
I mean 6-0, sorry about that. Item eight is public hearings and final passage. Item eight A is public hearing regarding Resolution Number B-17482, a resolution calling a public hearing on November 6, 2025, to determine whether the structure is located at 2700 Phoenix Street, Kenner, Louisiana, shall be abated by repair, rehabilitation, demolition, or removal.
Motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Schwartz, to open the public hearing. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. I mean 6-0, sorry. We're now in a public hearing.
Good evening, council. Catherine Topol, Director of Inspection and Code Enforcement for the city of Kenner. Tonight, we're here for demolition, seeking approval for demolition of a triplex structure at 2700 Phoenix Street. It is a two-story triplex apartment constructed as a slab on grade at 2700 Phoenix. It's owned by Mr. Ernest James III. On October 8, 2025, it was determined the property was unsafe and dangerous under the building codes for the city of Kenner, as well as Section 5-57 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Kenner. On October 3, 2025, a notice was sent by certified mail to the property owner advising him of the violations, and the owner has failed to comply with all notices and all orders to repair the structure. I would note, this has also been in court, and the owner had appeared at one of the court hearings, but not any following hearings. It is noted, the report of the engineer retained by the city of Kenner, the reasons for, which is pretty obvious by the pictures, the reasons inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, and/or abandonment. Utilities are disconnected. An abandoned vehicle and Jeski trailer is parked in the front of the property. The windows on the north side are boarded up, not that matters at this point. Some exterior doors are open, unlocked, allowing access to the interior, which, again, pretty much. The entire roof structure is gone, collapsed. There's falling sections of the structure leaning up against the first-floor exterior wall and on the north-side exterior wall. The collapsed roof structure has caused the floor joists for the second floor to also collapse. And due to this collapse, the remaining second-floor exterior walls are precariously standing without much support. The rest of the structural stability is severely compromised due to all the collapsed roof structure. Based on the report of the engineer and clearly the evidence in front of you and the pictures, is our recommendation that the city take the steps necessary so we can pursue demolition of this particular property. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Ms. Topol?
Counselwoman Dunn?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
When we went to look, you know, when we were going around to look back at the structure, there was a homeless person that was living in there. Are they, do you know if they're still there?
No, but that is something we would make certain before it actually comes down, that there's nobody in the structure.
Okay, because the last I heard from the residents that there was a homeless person that was still going in and out of the building, even though it's in that shape.
Yes.
But they were still going in and out.
Now, we would make certain of this clear.
Okay, thank you.
Counselwoman LaHatt?
Ms. Topol, thank you. Council chair, is a representative from this property here today?
Not that I'm aware of.
And we've sent all the required notices to the representatives?
Yes, and actually got the certified mail green card back with the signature.
Yeah, this is, that's a, that's a huge accident.
It is a Kenner resident.
Yeah, that's, that's a huge problem waiting to happen. As a kid, you're going to go in there and get hurt or worse, so that's, that's really bad. Okay, thank you.
And I would note that after Hurricane Ida, it was still standing. This is all since Hurricane Ida.
That's, actually, that was my question. It looks like they actually have pictures from September 26, 2024, and that, and it looks like it was actually in better, much better condition, so.
Yes.
It looks like it, this happened over the past year, correct?
That's correct. This is very, very, what I would consider recent. We were trying to get it repaired until it just.
Yeah, what hap, I mean, I'm even, I don't even understand what happened, so I'm curious.
Yeah, it just.
Just poor maintenance, I guess.
I would agree. Okay. Okay. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to address the council on this matter? Okay. Motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Schwartz, to close the public hearing. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Something different. Okay, okay.
Motion passes 6-0 to close your public hearing.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Schwartz, to approve. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 6-0 to demolish within the time allowed by law.
Thank you.
Welcome. Item nine is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease, and/or alienation of removable property. We have none. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. We have none. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by council members. Item 13A is a resolution appointing the members of the Alcoholic Beverage Permit Review Committee.
Motion by Councilmember McKinney, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. Is there anyone, is there anyone willing to speak on this item? Okay, council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 13,957, an order to accept on the lowest responsive bid received from Nitsim Promotional Manufacturing Corporation to supply pressure-sensitive brake tags and inserts in accordance with electronic bid 25-2185, and an amount not to exceed $25,000 annually for the Inspection and Code Enforcement Department.
Motion by Councilmember Sharwa, seconded by Councilmember LaHatt. Is there anyone willing, wishing to speak on this item? Councilmember, you, okay. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 13,958, an order to accept on the lowest responsive bid received from Restech for the purchase of IT supplies for the new fire station in accordance with electronic bid 25-2191, and an amount not to exceed $5,465.70 for the Information Technology and Telecommunications Department.
Motion by Councilmember Sharwa, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Councilwoman Sharwa?
Chief Dyer, on this right here, the IT, is that going to be compatible with ours, or is that going to be independent?
This is all set up with the city IT. We got with them, and they, they're actually the ones that put this bid in for, to make sure everything was compatible.
Good, thank you.
Councilmen, council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 13,959, an order to accept on the lowest responsive bid received from Ace Garage Door Company LLC to remove, furnish, and install a new overhead door and operator at Fire Station 379 in accordance with electronic bid 25-2186, and an amount not to exceed $24,543 for the Kenner Fire Department.
Motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Sharwa. Is there anyone willing, wishing to speak on this item?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharwa?
Again, Chief Dyer, sir, or Chief Morris. I know he is the maintenance guy, that's what I'm going to call him. How are you going to arrange the door? Y'all got any particular way? You only going to put one door in the back?
Yes.
On the west side?
Yes.
And how, now you got the two doors on the east side?
Right.
That's going to be a kinda?
Well, it's for the ease of the apparatus, making that tight turn in through the west side, the backside of the station. To put the two doors in it, put the style in the middle and make smaller doors, it'd be too difficult for the unit to make that turn into the backside of the station.
All right.
So we have to go with a larger door on the, on the rear of the station.
And just like the other door that would, there, you couldn't get parts to repair the door that you have now?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's becoming relatively expensive. That was probably the original door on that station when it was built decades ago, so those parts are more expensive. And then the, the new doors that we're putting in are higher wind rating, as well as newer, enabled, easier to maintain.
Is it going to be an overhead door, or going to be spring doors, or?
No, no, it's a roll-up door.
Will be an overhead door?
Yeah.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see that finished, when it's finished like that.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to see when that's going to be finished. I was going to be looking how the guys can actually.
Well, we actually was waiting for grant funding to replace all the doors on the station, and it's, it's been several years. We just can't allow it to keep going on the way it is, so, with the unit, with only having one access on the east side of the station, on the, off the Williams Boulevard side of the station.
Now, with the union, new unit coming in, you think that might be a problem with the door and trying to get that new truck into the station?
No, it shouldn't be a problem with getting that truck into that station. It's, like I said, that's why we're not going with the double doors. The double doors are cheaper and easier to maintain, but we need the wide area to make the turn. You know, you know the space that you have between the fire station and the gym to the rear of it, it's easy to make the turn with the wider opening.
All right, I was just concerned with the new truck coming in. I didn't know if the wheelbase was longer, the turning radius was going to be different, or something like that, that would, because it's been done before, get a new truck, and then realize that the height of the truck and the door height, then wouldn't be able to get it in.
No, no, we looked at all those variables, yes, and still, we got it taken care of.
I appreciate it, Chief, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chief Morris. Thank you, councilman. Let's see, council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 15D is summary ordinance number 13,960, an order to authorize the citywide use of Louisiana State Contract Number 4400033422 with vehicle parts and equipment. zero three three four two two with vehicle parts and equipment incorporated to furnish and install light bars and sirens in an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars annually.
Motion by councilmember Brannigan, seconded by councilmember Lahat. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, council members in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen E is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-one in order to approve in an agreement with the reserve component for federal lobbying and advocacy services in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars.
Motion by councilmember McKinney, seconded by councilmember Lahat. Is anyone wishing to speak on this item? Council members in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen F is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-two in order to approve an cooperative endeavor agreement with the state of Louisiana Department of the Treasury and the City of Kennesaw for the purchase of lighting and equipment for park improvements.
Motion by councilmember Brannigan, seconded by councilmember McKinney. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, council members in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen G is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-three in order to accept in the lowest responsive bid received from New Light Electrical Wholesalers to purchase lighting materials for string lights on Williams Boulevard in Rivertown in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash thirty forty-eight in an amount not to exceed eight thousand one hundred dollars for the general services department. I have a motion by councilmember Dunn, seconded by councilmember Brennan.
Oh, sorry. Is there anyone willing, wishing to speak on this item? Yes, Ryan?
Yes, please. Thank you, Councilwoman McKinney. My name is Ryan Nugent. I live at fifty-four forty-four Erlanger Road in District Three. First off, I want to preface with, I wasn't sure if this was a council-funded project or if this is coming from the general fund. I filed a public records request for this and the subsequent agenda item mainly because I was curious as to what they entailed, but the information I received left me somewhat confused. This item in particular is for color-selectable Westgate brand Bluetooth-controlled string lights to replace the existing string lights at use in Rivertown. These Bluetooth-controlled lights cost about a hundred thirty-one dollars per string as compared to about fifty-three dollars per string for the white lights we have out here right now. So my first question is, do the existing lights require replacement? And if so, why are the Bluetooth lights necessary given what I'm constantly reminded is the cash-strapped status of the city? Next, while I would appreciate answers to those questions, the other thing that left me perplexed was the solicitation process itself. I can only tell you what you're voting to approve because of the bids. There's no actual record of the solicitation, meaning there's no actual record of what the city asked for. I assume this means the city solicited the bids by calling the various vendors over the phone, and I assume that because I can't imagine another scenario where there would be no record of the solicitation. Now, I fully understand that soliciting bids that way is totally legal and permissible in certain circumstances. It does come with some inherent issues, and I'll address one of the biggest issues with soliciting bids this way in the next agenda item. The last question I want to ask, though, is what is the dollar amount threshold that is required for a publicly posted solicitation? I had posed the same question to the legal department last week, and I received an entire Louisiana state statute in response. I definitely appreciate a clear answer to that question. So to recap, do the existing lights require replacement? If so, what's the need for the upgrade as opposed to replacing them with more of the same? And finally, what is the dollar amount threshold required for a publicly posted solicitation?
Liz?
That's all the questions. Okay, so like Ryan said, we followed our procedure for this one. It was under the threshold. We do not need to solicit it any other way. The state law that the legal department provided would have given you a lot of details, but we typically do anything over fifty thousand dollars as a sealed bid. So our rules are a little more stricter than the state, where theirs would be like sixty thousand for materials, two hundred and fifty thousand, much larger amounts. So, you know, we try to advertise as much as possible, but for something like this amount of money, we solicit by phone or by email, something like that. So it's not typically, I know you did the public records request, so we only provided what we had because that was only what was required, so.
Great.
I think that was everything that you had.
That was the last question.
Director Glorius, do you want to answer the other questions?
Yeah, as far as the changing of the lights, it's strictly an upgrade, to upgrade them that we, so we have the control to change them throughout the year for special events like Christmas time with the village being down here. We can go red, green, and white, and for all the festivals we do at certain times, like during, right now, Veterans Time, we probably could have had them red, white, and blue. It's a beautification improvement for Rivertown. It's strictly an upgrade.
Yeah, and it was general, it's actually dedicated revenue for Rivertown that we're using, so this isn't money that could be used anywhere else in the city. It's strictly dedicated for Rivertown use.
Great, thank you. Okay, let's see. Anyone else wishing to speak? Council members in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen H is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-four in order to repealing ordinance number twelve thousand nine hundred and fifty-two and accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Armstrong Supply Company to purchase materials for lighting at Rivertown parking lot in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash thirty thirty-nine in an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty cents for the general services department.
Motion by councilmember Dunn, seconded by councilmember Brennan. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Mr. Nugent?
Ryan Nugent, fifty-four forty-four Erlanger Road in District Three. As I mentioned on the previous agenda item, I can only tell you what you're voting on thanks to the bids themselves. This one is bolts, et cetera, for the lighting in the Rivertown parking lot. There are no actual fixtures associated with this purchase. The other thing I discovered, though, with this and the preceding item is that in both cases, one of the three bids was rejected due to the bidder not bidding on the correct items. Now, I want to make it very clear, as was the case previously, I'm not suggesting any sort of impropriety. The rejected bids came from different companies, and I'm pretty sure the rejected bidder on one item was actually the winning bidder on the other. The reason I'm bringing attention to the rejected bids is the errors on the part of the bidders, one of which was actually, or is actually, the city's largest lighting equipment supplier, are very possibly a flaw in the solicitation process itself. Again, the last one was only like, I don't know, I think eight thousand dollars. This one's a little bit closer to that fifty thousand dollar threshold. As I said previously, I assume that the city contacted each of the three vendors by calling them over the phone. Well, if we had time, we could try a little experiment. I could whisper a little message into Chief Connolly's ear, and then y'all could pass it around the table, and we could see what we get by the time it gets back to Councilwoman Dunn. I'm pretty sure we'd all get a pretty good laugh, and we know this because we all played telephone at school at some point. My point is that if the goal is to get the best deal for the constituents of the city, maybe phone solicitations aren't the best option for doing that. I think it was mentioned that sometimes this is done via phone, sometime this is done via email. Even in situations where the dollar amount of a purchase doesn't require a publicly posted solicitation, I think it's still almost always best to put something in writing. Sometimes, as may have been the case here, something as simple as an email could save the city hundreds or thousands of dollars in any particular situation. So just something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent. Any other comments? Okay. Yes. Nope, is there any?
Only thing I know is that that goes out to bid, and they go through the bid process, so that's handled through the administration.
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to correct, I know we said it's closer to the fifty thousand, it's fourteen thousand eight sixty-three, so I just don't want the public to think it's, you know, forty-nine thousand, so it's still way under that threshold.
Yes.
I just wanted to offer some clarification as it refers to how things are bid. If you go to our city website and you go into the purchasing department, you can see exactly how we bid items based on value.
Great, thank you, Ms. Newton. Any other comments? Council members in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen I is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-five in order to accept in the lowest responsive bid received from Havana Nights LLC to furnish and install retroflex solar LED off-grid systems at Megas Park in accordance with sealed bid twenty-five dash sixty-nine seventeen in an amount not to exceed eighty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty dollars for the Parks and Recreation Department. I have a motion.
That's okay. A motion by councilmember Brannigan, seconded by councilmember McKinney. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Please come up and say your name and your district.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Richard Brown, District Four. I live in the Holly Heights area. And just have a few questions about this, and I appreciate Councilman Brannigan and Parks and Recreation moving forward with getting us lights for Megas Park in Holly Heights. We desperately need lights, and we've been asking for them for about three years, especially since the new playground was built. We had expected, and had only discussed up until this point, having regular electric lights furnished by Entergy with power, with places to plug in for power for when we have special events. We don't really have a problem with the solar lights as such, but we do still need power. And I just wanted a confirmation from, mostly from Councilman Brannigan, that the plan is still to provide power to Megas Park, you know, which can be used for special events. That's still part of the plan?
Do you have more questions you want to ask? Or is that all?
We can go, if you can answer that one, I may or may not have some others.
Okay. I sent a text message to Ms. Alessandro today. She was, she had asked me about this. You and I talked about it. I explained to her what the text message was, told her I should have taken a picture of it and sent it to you. The deal is that we chose the solar lights because it was sixty thousand dollars less than putting up poles and running wires and having to do the borings to get it set up. I also told her, the second reason was the city does not have to pay for electricity on solar poles. And I also told her that I am also gonna work on getting outlets under the little deal where the table is and on the other side of the park where the new equipment is, where y'all have to plug in stuff. But that would be a lot cheaper than boring all the way around the park, and it was a sixty thousand dollar difference. And that's why we're doing, I'm doing this the way it is.
I appreciate, I appreciate it, councilman, and that essentially was my understanding from conversations with you and from talking to Stacy Alessandro. I was out of town yesterday, but she said that she had communicated with you.
Yes, and I responded to make sure everybody was on the same page. And when I talked to Stacy today, I told her that I would, next week, two weeks, we'll meet out there. I can tell you that the electric, the boxes are not gonna be installed for Sunday's event, but I told her today that I would meet her out there and make sure that we get these boxes, electrical boxes, where they need to be to take care of that park. And the reason being is that there are a lot of events that go on at that park, and I know that we need juice to pile with some of the stuff. But it's a sixty thousand dollar savings on material and insulation, and it's also gonna save the city where we don't have to pay for electricity.
Thank you. And listen, councilman, we appreciate all the help you've given to us in Holly Heights and with the Fall Festival that's upcoming this weekend, with all of our events at Megas Park. You've been a huge help, and also with decorating our subdivision entrance, and we appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Nugent?
Mr. Brown had actually asked me to take a quick look at these fixtures, and just before y'all think I'm gonna get into another round of criticism, these actually do get a passing grade. They're pretty solid fixtures. They do come with a ten-year warranty on most of the components, the solar cells, I think the LED components as well. One thing I would say is that especially with a solar product like this, it's very, very important that the city does actually stay on top of those warranty replacements because even with the best of fixtures, failures do happen, especially when you're integrating multi-component, components like, you know, an LED matrix and a solar cell on top of that. There are more things that can break, there are more things that can go wrong, so it's just important to actually use that warranty. In terms of the fixtures themselves, I'm not sure if they're the same thing, because I actually don't know if those are hardwired. These aesthetically look very similar to the fixtures that are in front of Ketterston Park Pavilion. The output that I'm seeing listed in terms of the lumen output looks good, should really help with safety, both for the kids using the playground and for, you know, other people using the facilities in that park. Color temperature's a little cooler than I'd like, but again, that's a minor detail on this one. The only thing that I was not super crazy about, and I haven't delved into solar-powered LED enough to know if this is a restrictive factor in that subset of the market. The CRI, which is the color rendering index on these fixtures, it basically is how accurate it renders color, you know, basically how clearly you're gonna see something. It's listed on these as seventy plus. Industry standard at this point is usually about eighty plus, ninety plus is ideal, so that was the kind of one ding against these, but everything else, you know, I think they're probably an eight point five out of ten, and like I said, they should be a huge improvement. And thank you again, Councilman Brannigan, for getting this done.
Okay, and one other thing, these fixtures are at the Bonneville Boat Launch. If you want to go take a look at the illumination, I went out there and looked at them, and it's a, it illuminates it perfect because you don't want that park lit up like daytime till eleven o'clock at night. And basically, the plan is to keep it lit to ten or eleven o'clock, and then they shut off. So I went and looked at the lights at the Bonneville Boat Launch, and they, I think they're gonna work really well. So we'll see.
Thank you, councilman. Council members in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item sixteen is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item sixteen A is an ordinance approving the lease with Rivertown Optical Shop LLC for a portion of lot W three square F, Kennesaw Orleans subdivision, Kennesaw Jefferson Parish, Louisiana, more specifically the property at four hundred Williams Boulevard, which said property is owned by the City of Kennesaw. Item sixteen B is an ordinance approving the lease of Floor Deluxe LLC for a portion of lot W three square F, Kennesaw Orleans subdivision, Kennesaw Jefferson Parish, Louisiana, more specifically the property at four hundred Williams Boulevard, which said property is owned by the City of Kennesaw. Item sixteen C is an ordinance approving the plan of re-subdivision of lots X dash two A and X dash two B, old Kennesaw subdivision, and to new lots X dash two A one and X dash two B one, old Kennesaw subdivision, Kennesaw Jefferson Parish, Louisiana, and dedicating a fifty-five foot by a hundred foot shared access easement, all shown on a survey by Dating Marquis and Associates LLC dated July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Item sixteen D is an ordinance approving a conditional use for the establishment of amusement center on lot eighteen F one, Chateau Estate subdivision, Kennesaw Jefferson Parish, Louisiana. Item sixteen E is an ordinance ratifying an emergency purchase of two five-ton air conditioning systems and one mini-split system for fire station number thirty-seven in the amount of eighty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars from Beacon Air Conditioning, Heating, and Refrigeration Incorporated for the General Services Department. Item sixteen F is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from EBE Fence Company Incorporated to furnish and install new windscreen at Kennesaw Maintenance Yard in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash twenty-one eighty-nine in an amount not to exceed seven thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars for the General Services Department. Item sixteen G is an ordinance approving an agreement with Interstate Restoration LLC doing business's first onsite property restoration to provide pre-positioned emergency remediation services in accordance with RFP twenty-five dash sixty-nine ten for the General Services Department. Item sixteen H is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Quality Fab and Mechanical LLC to remove, furnish, and install new countertops at fire station number thirty-seven in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash twenty-one eighty-eight in an amount not to exceed eight thousand four hundred and forty dollars for the General Services Department. Item sixteen I is an ordinance ratifying an emergency purchase of eight Ram Fan PPV battery fans, eight Makita forty-volt Max XGT four-point-oh AH batteries, two-pack, and five Makita forty-volt Max XGT dual-port rapid chargers from Sidens Martin Emergency Group in the amount of thirty-eight thousand four hundred and three dollars and twelve cents for the Kennesaw Fire Department. Item sixteen J is an order to authorize in the purchase of one Lucas three-chest compression system with case and accessories and one Life Pack one thousand AED K- and one LifePack 1,000 AED case with case and accessories from Stryker Sales LLC in the amount of $28,092.40 for the Kenner Fire Department. Item 16K is an ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Louisiana Department of Treasury for state aid to local government entities in an amount not to exceed $500,000 for the Kenner Police Department. Item 16L is an ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Louisiana Department of Treasury for state aid to local government entities in an amount not to exceed $250,000 for the Kenner Police Department. Item 16M is an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the United States Department of Justice, Office of Community Oriented Policing Services. Award number 15JCOPS-25-GG-01007-PPSE in the amount of $175,000 with no local match, cash match required for the hiring of an Immigration Board or Security Analyst for the Kenner Police Department. Item 16N is an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the United States Department of Justice, Office of Community Oriented Policing Services. Award number 15JCOPS-25-JGG-01008-PPSE in the amount of $175,000 with no local cash match required for the hiring of an opioid drug market interruption analyst for the Kenner Police Department. Item 16O is an ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor agreement with Jefferson Parish Economic Development and Port District, JEDCO, for services related to the increasing economic development in the city of Kenner for an amount not to exceed $75,000. Item 16P is an ordinance authorizing the use of Louisiana State Contract Number 4400027864 with Swift Recreation LLC to furnish and install playground equipment, shade, structure and surfacing at Woodlake Playground in an amount not to exceed $145,446.62. Item 16Q is an ordinance approving the renewal to the software as a service subscription bundle agreement with Interview Now, a sole-source provider, and increase in the not-to-exceed amount to $20,000 annually for the Kenner Police Department. Item 16R is an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Havana Nights LLC to furnish and install solar-powered LED street lighting systems in Kenner Laytown in accordance with Seal Bid 25-6921 in an amount not to exceed $44,936 for the General Services Department. Item 16S is an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Centric Gulf Coast Incorporated for 4.0 MGD sewer lift station upgrades in accordance with Seal Bid 25-6916 in an amount of $5,203,958 for the Department of Waste Water. Item 16T is an ordinance authorizing the utilization of existing Jefferson Parish Contract Number 55-00023021 with Gulf Coast Oil and Supply LLC for the purchase of automotive petroleum products and other related items on an as-needed basis. Item 16U is an ordinance approving a first amendment to the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement with the Parish of Jefferson for the conversion of tennis courts to pickleball courts on Alabama Avenue between West Esplanade Avenue and Vintage Drive in an amount not to exceed $75,000 for the Council District Three. Item 16V is an ordinance amending the 2024-2025 operating budget to comply with the Louisiana Revised State Statute 39:1310-1311. Item 17 is reports from the council and/or special committees.
Anyone?
Nope.
Seeing none. Item 18 is new business. We have none. Item 19 is unfinished business and our motions to reconsider are removed from the table position. We have none. Item 20 is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
First on my list, I have Mr. Paul Best. Sir, you have three minutes. And if you can state your address or district that you live in.
Good evening. Yeah, I live on 3045 Kansas Avenue at the corner of Bruin. And my three concerns are the speeding issue, which everybody's aware of. The second would be the fireworks violations that's going on in Kenner. Obviously, that's been grandfathered in. In other words, people really, it's not an issue. But the fact is, for every one person that violates the law, there's 10 people out there that would not, prefer not to have them around, you know, in their neighborhood. Because the new fireworks now that's coming out of China, the concussion is so big. It's not like when we were growing up, we had M80s that were quite large percussion. But now, it's like three M80s at once. So it's, you know, it's not only terrorizing our pets, but some people have young kids trying to sleep at night. And that's sort of, that's a form of terrorization. And I guess the other third issue would be trash in the streets. Like, I picked this up, you know, in my street. You'd hate to roll over this going down the street. So, you know, that's been getting out of hand. You come down Williams the other day by that hotel, and it was just trash, just all over. And I mentioned it on the forum, the Next Door Neighbor forum, and everybody's like, shit, it's way out of control. So I don't know how you're going to deal with that. But back to the speeding. Also, did you notice the cars going up and down here? Some of them are quite loud. One of them was backfiring back here about an hour ago. Some of the cars, there's two cars in my neighborhood have racing manifolds, like you would hear at Tallagasi, Alabama racetrack. One moved away, thank God, but then there was another one comes up just a few blocks away, passes up my street three or four times a day. And it's a race car, race car manifold. It just doesn't belong. It's very loud. So how, you know, and that's, not only, there's also loud mufflers too. But if we can get rid of the manifold people first, then deal with the mufflers. And the speeding, I don't know if anybody would give me an extra few minutes to how to address the speeding. Like, I live on Kansas and Bruin. You know, the students leave school, but if you go, it's 250 feet because it's a half a block. So I tried it the other day. When you take off going, and, you know, it's 20 mile an hour. And like, I talked to one of the councilmen here, and he told me it's going to take a big, it's going to take a... A what? Yeah, traffic study. That's in the thousands of dollars. So, but to go from 250 feet from one stop sign to the other stop sign, you got 20 mile an hour, right? Once you hit 15 miles an hour, you know, you got to stop. But these people want to go 20. And so, you know, you're breaking hard. So just real quick, my recommendation would be to have police give tickets. And the one mile an hour over 20 would be $10. Two would be 20, and so on. And maybe the first month, it would be just warnings so everybody's aware. We all don't want people to get tickets because everybody's trying to survive. And a dollar, you know, paycheck to paycheck, they don't have money to... And I think the speeding ticket's here, like, is a flat 150, if I believe, if I'm correct. And then you got to go to court. And so, no one wants to destroy anybody's life, but...
Thank you, thank you. Your time is up. I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. So do you think that could be considered this year in 2026?
Thank you, Chief.
Hold on.
No, I agree. We have traffic problems throughout the city. That's one of the biggest complaints we get. Our Traffic Division does prioritize complaints, and they do act on complaints as far as adjusting the fine in accordance with the speed limit. That's done through the ordinance and through state law. And, but they do it at an opportunity, we come to court if they have a clean record. It's up to the DA, the prosecutor, to recognize that and look at any other mitigating circumstances. But I will make sure that the Traffic Division is around your area more, make sure you're on the list. You know, we have an entire city. That's a common complaint through every subdivision, every thoroughfare. When you finish Roosevelt, that's going to be a, you know, a common complaint because it's smooth as a street. You saw it in your district. But, you know, I do hear your complaint, and we will act on it.
Okay, one last thing. What about the fireworks violations? Is there anybody I can talk to to give some suggestions to get this under control?
Yeah, so my deputy chief is right back there looking for somebody to talk to. He'll take...
I have good ideas for that.
Okay, well, he'll take any recommendations.
Thank you, Mr., thank you. Mr. Ryan Nugent?
Thank you, Councilwoman McKinney. First off, I'd like to thank the administration, Councilman LaHat, for the beautiful replacement Palm Vista Garden Club Planner at Januson Vintage. When y'all said you were planning to rebuild it brick for brick, you did not exaggerate. It's literally identical to the original, aside from the addition of a very nice bench, and the craftsmanship looks very nice. Next, I'm going to switch gears to a topic you guys hear me talk about a lot, and that's lighting. Entergy is in the midst of transitioning all of our street lighting to LED. And not surprisingly, they're taking a less-than-desirable approach when it comes to major considerations like color temperature and light diffusion. I've spoken recently with several residents of New Orleans communities that demanded better options from Entergy when New Orleans was making its transition to LED. In neighborhoods like the Garden District in Audubon Place, you won't find 4,000K street lighting because the residents spoke up. And surprisingly, Entergy actually listened. According to prominent interior, according to a prominent interior designer who lives in Bayou St. John, another soft-light neighborhood, Entergy asked the residents of those areas to pay an additional one-time fee for the privilege of not having their streets decked out like the inside of a prison. And these residents aren't alone. Knoxville, Tennessee, Washington DC, Gainesville, Florida, Santa Fe, New Mexico, Chicago, Salt Lake City, Denver and Phoenix are just a handful of the hundreds of US municipalities that have adopted soft-light options like 3,000K for street lighting. New York City, for example, started its LED transition in the early 2010s. New York selected 4,000K initially in part because the city was an early adopter and in part because they left the decision-making to electricians and utility companies. In 2015, NYC switched to a 3,000K standard following public outcry. As of this summer, they still have 140,000 out of 400,000 fixtures waiting to be swapped from 4,000K to 3,000K. And it's happening on the state level, too. In the last legislative session, two Republican Arkansas state senators proposed a bill to limit street lighting to a maximum color temperature of 3,000K in all residential areas statewide. Like those senators, I live in a beautiful neighborhood that I want desperately to preserve, and I know many of my friends and neighbors feel similarly. I'm here today requesting assistance from the administration and from Councilman LaHat in facilitating the sort of discussions the residents of those New Orleans neighborhoods were able to have with Entergy. The residents of our beautiful District Three communities deserve no less than that same opportunity. Please help give us that chance. Thank you.
Any comments? Councilman LaHat?
Yeah, actually, earlier neglected to say next Thursday is the dedication of the Palm Vista Garden Planner, that morning at 9:30. And I want to give a lot of credit to the administration for dealing with that project. Jose and Amy have been outstanding. They put up the funds for it. We had to make that change to the Power Boulevard biking trail because it was cutting into a neighbor's property. So we had to move the garden. We promised the Garden Club ladies, they have a great club, that we were going to move it, make it exactly as it was. And Amy and Jose did a fantastic job with that. They were very ecstatic, very happy. So thank you all for focusing on that because the people really cared about that issue. And we hope to see y'all out there next Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman LaHat. Mr. Teft? I know you know the drill, three minutes, and say your address or your district.
Greg Teft, Fifth District. All I have to say tonight is I do want to thank the Public Works Department. I'm finding that, especially on West Loyola, our roads are getting fixed. And that is very good because they responded. And I'm sure Councilman Brennan, Brennan has a lot to do with that. But I can say that when I've called Public Works, they usually respond very, very quickly. And like I said, they've done some real good work on West Loyola. And I'm sure they're doing the same throughout the city. The other thing is, while it's not perfect, I do think it's fair to say that some of the littering has subsided a little bit. It's not quite as bad as it once was. I don't know if that's because of the city getting more involved with, when they see the litter, that they're actually taking action or what it is. But I do see that there has been a difference in the amount of litter that I've been seeing, especially, again, on West Loyola, we used to have a lot of littering on the medium. That has subsided quite a bit. So, and I think that it's only fair, since I'm really critical of most of the things that's going on, that I do say that when I do see something that looks like it's working, to at least let it be known. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teft. Appreciate your time. Yes, Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Council Chair. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Teft. Yes, I think Public Works is doing an outstanding job. We are doing repairs. You know, the last few years, the money that we received, especially with COVID and such, was very minimal for our district funds. In this past year, with the treasure chest improvement and some other things, we're definitely in a much better situation financially and able to do some projects that have been kind of stalled. I think we also have a real good relationship with Waste Pro. Their guys, on a regular basis, through the three Loyolas, every, every week are looking for grocery carts and such and not even calling anymore. They just go pick them up and return them to the stores. So there are a lot of improvements. It's not just in District Five. I do appreciate you saying that. But we're all, we're all committed to making things better. And that's from the top of the administration all the way down to the bottom. So thank you.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, part of the Loyola is also a part of my district. And as I can remember, when we first came in, there was a lot of construction that was going on around that area also of Loyola. Councilman Brennan, I mean Brennan, in my district, but together. But what happened, because of all the construction, it was a lot of debris, a lot of the stuff all in the yards. Even with Lincoln Madison Civic Association, we had to clean up. We did go back, and a lot of the trash comes back. But I think now, hopefully, people have stopped throwing so much trash in the street because, especially around the Sam's area where a lot of that trash blows, I've knocked on the businesses in there personally and asked them when they do their gardening, at least pick up the trash before they cut the grass. Sometimes it happens, sometimes it does not. But you are right, Loyola is a lot cleaner than what it was. And I do attribute some of that also to the construction that's just about incomplete. And I also know that when there was a complaint going out in the area, the mayor himself asked the adminis, you know, the Public Works Department to go out and to clean a lot of that also. I'm hoping, not only, you know, in this area in our district, and believe you me, I've been working on it, to try and find a way to just have a crew to just go through our Kenner to help clear a lot of that. So I'm hoping maybe in the near future, something will, you know, there would be a separate crew to actually take care of that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Up next is Richard Brown.
Thank you, Madam President. Richard Brown, live in District Four. Mostly just wanted to talk a little bit about the Holly Heights Fall Festival that is this weekend at Megas Park in Holly Heights. It's on Barron Drive, basically near the intersection of Barron and Rancher, Rancher Road in Holly Heights. Usually, we have this festival before Halloween, and it's in conjunction with Halloween. We have, this year for various reasons, we had to schedule it for after Halloween. But we have a lot of special events planned. It's going to be a great time for the kids. They will be free, it's free, it's always, it's always free, although it's primarily for the Holly Heights, Holly Heights area, Westwood, Chateau Terre, and some of the nearby subdivisions. Anybody from the city is welcome to come. It's totally free for the kids. There'll be different kinds of fun and games. There'll be face painting for the kids, some arts and crafts. We're going to have a magician. There'll be a stilt walker, balloon twister, a couple of other activities for the kids that I'm not, I'm not aware of because I'm involved more in the technical end of it. I expected Stacy Alessandro, who is actually the chair of the Fall Fest Committee, to be here and give you a sales pitch. She couldn't make it, so I'm here. But she also, she wanted me to say, and by the way, it's Sunday, this coming Sunday... But she also, she wanted me to say, and by the way, it's Sunday, this coming Sunday, November ninth, from eleven AM until two PM. I know I need to give the date because this council meeting shows over and over. So it's November, Sunday, November ninth, from eleven AM until two PM. And I've already said there'll be free food, hot dogs and pizza. I know, I'm not sure what other food, but I know there'll be hot dogs and pizza. Stacy wanted me to mention that there's somebody who is sponsoring us and partnering with us, an outfit called Weem Dreams, which is an organization that provides children in need with free Halloween costumes. And they're going to be set up there with a table and will be accepting donations of both money and costumes. So if any of y'all watching this have some, you know, slightly-used Halloween costumes, or maybe your kids have outgrown, this organization can use them and will give them to needy kids whose families cannot afford Halloween costumes. This will be a great time. This is the third or fourth time we've had this Fall Festival. It's always a great time. It's free at Me Gas Park. Y'all come. Does anybody have any que, by the way, George Brannigan, thank you for all of your help. You have always a tremendous help with this, and so has Parish Councilwoman Arida Bohannon. And she was the force behind the inclusive playground at Me Gas Park. But Councilman Brannigan, thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Lori, Walter Lori? You have three minutes, and if you can state your address or your district.
Yes, good evening. My name is Walter Lauri, and I, I live at the Chardonnay Village condominium complex, and things are not very pleasant over there. I'm here tonight to, to reach out and try to get some assistance to resolve some issues that have been going on for a number of years. I reached out to Councilman Brannigan, District Four office, about issues in our neighborhood. Unfortunately, I received almost no response to these issues. The first issue that came up had to do with our street conditions in the Chardonnay Village. They have not been cleaned for, at least at that point, almost nine years. They refuse to clean the debris, the accumulated sand, the other junk that accumulates on a road that has traffic on it day and night. Their resistance to doing that is beyond my understanding. It took me and others to get a petition together to go out and visit our neighbors. There are thirty-three acres at Chardonnay Village. There are two hundred and seventy-seven residents. These people finally got it. The streets were cleaned after that petition. Almost ten years that dirt laid there became quite a divisive event of dropping the sand back in 2015 on the advice of Kenner's Code Department to take care of some issue with the foundations, to prevent mice and rats and other things to crawl under there. So they needed to dump sand around these foundations. Well, they put about six to eight inches of soft, silty soil, sand, behind my building on an incline. They did not take any care of that. So they were negligent. They dumped this, rain event after rain event, this stuff happened. Mr. Brannigan, I addressed you just last week to help out in a situation that had to deal with me and the shut-off of the water due to my lack of payment. It's my understanding that cutting off utilities is not proper, correct, or legal. Apparently, in their, and I say Chardonnay villages, rules and regulations or bylaws, they say they can do that. I didn't find it, but they quoted me that. Other people have had their water shut off. Senior citizens are left without the utility of water. This water is supplied by Kenner. The bill is paid by Chardonnay Village. Each individual, then, is allocated, I guess, some amount of money that they need to pay into the water that comes in. Well, that gives them the right of, apparently, to shut off my water. I don't have a meter. Nobody has a meter.
Mr. Lori, you only have three minutes, and you're now over almost by a minute. Can you wrap it up quickly?
Sure. I'm asking for continued assistance from our council, from the Police Department, from those in the Code Department in Kenner Code, because nobody has shown up. Nobody has showed up to resolve the issue of the moving handicap garbage cans these people did. They moved handicap garbage cans away from those individuals that need to access those. Where do I go for help?
I think...
Nowhere. So please help me. I request that any guidance in this be addressed and communicated to me. If there's anything that Mr. Brannigan can do to resolve and quiet the harassment and the retaliation and retribution, that would be wonderful, because I'm not the only person that's been affected by the behaviors of the individuals of our association board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lori. Thank you.
Councilman Brannigan would like to speak?
Yes, Councilman Brannigan.
Mr. Lori, I spoke to you on, I think it was October thirtieth, at three thirty, eight PM, and the concerns that you had talked to me about, roads and sand all over the place in Chardonnay Village being dirty, and them shutting your water off, all of those issues are between you and Chardonnay Village's board, because the city of Kenner does not own the streets in Chardonnay. I explained that to you. And we do not, since we do not own the streets, and Legal, correct me if I'm wrong, we do not clean those streets. I don't know who told Chardonnay Village to put sand in the, in the place. Obviously, there are settlement problems throughout the city of Kenner. I know at my house, things have gone down a foot in the last thirty-three years. At that time, you also talked about water being shut off. Chardonnay Village has their own water system. And why, I don't know why they turned your water off, but if you said that a bill wasn't paid or something, but if you don't pay your bill, obviously, the water's going to get turned off.
That is, that is...
Sir...
Wait, wait. It's in direct contradiction to the Louisiana Condominium Act, that undue...
Sir...
Undue finances are not the reason to shut off a utility, water or otherwise.
Sir, if, please sit down, so you already have your...
I thought he wanted me to respond to his question.
Sir, you only have three minutes. It's not a back and forth. Councilman Brannigan has the floor, and you can come back next time if you'd like, or you can, after the meeting, you can have a one-on-one with council.
I got to make the corrections because he's speaking inaccretly about the situations.
Thank you.
I explained to you, Mr. Lori, exactly what the deal is with Chardonnay Village. This is an issue, I'm sorry to say this, but it's an issue between you and the Chardonnay Village Board. And if you would like to have that checked out, we can have legal look at it, but Chardonnay Village owns Chardonnay Village. And we get a lot of calls, I get a lot of calls, about work not being done right, leaks in apartments. It is a civil deal, and I hate to say it, but it's between you and your homeowners' association. And I do whatever I can do for anyone that calls me, but it's a situation where, you know, if the city of Kenner starts going to that civic, that area, it would be like us sending somebody to paint Joe's house. You can't do that. And I really think that, you know, in your situation, and based on what we talked about on the phone, that it's a civil deal, and you would have to deal with it with an attorney. That's what I would think. I'm not an attorney. I don't know, but I would assume that you would have to hire an attorney and deal with the board at Chardonnay Village. Legal, am I correct on that?
Yes, and I actually looked at, when you called me about this, I think it was last week, I looked it up, and there is a lawsuit going on between the HOA and Mr. Lori. I really, we can't really get involved. I mean, it's a civil matter. We don't control the water. That's Jefferson Parish. Kenner doesn't, doesn't send water into any, any place, so.
But the, the water issue is that the water is paid by Chardonnay Village Association.
Correct, correct. They control whether water gets turned on or off.
And they can, they can...
There's nothing that Kenner can do to force, to force Chardonnay Village or Jefferson Parish to turn the water on. He could probably do something like that in court to ask for, the court to order it, the judge to order it. That's all I can say.
But I mean, I was correct on...
It's civil, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Councilman Brannigan, are you finished?
No.
Thank you. Fire Chief Jason Dyer, Assistant Chief.
Just wanted to take this time and congratulate Communication Supervisor Greg Williams. He retired after working for the city for over thirty-three years. He started off in the Police Department and wisely came over to the Fire Department. So we'd like to congratulate him and for his dedication service.
Yeah, just want to commend the mayor and the administration for putting on the Veterans Day celebration today. It was, it was a great event, great speaker, but it's important, as the speaker stressed, that, you know, we should celebrate our veterans and those who have given their lives for this country more than just one day or two days a year. So I just want to thank and commend the administration and the mayor for what they put on today.
Great. Thank you, Chief Conley. And I just want to remind everyone, it was also on the consent agenda that the Kenner Discovery is having their fair this weekend. It's open to everyone. It's on Saturday, November eighth, ten to ten, and November ninth, ten to six. They have lots of food, fun, and festivities, as well as food trucks. So please come out there and support the Kenner Discovery community. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, well, motion to close the meeting.
I'd like to say something.
Adern, thank you.